Tonight's invocation is by Reverend Leroy Bradshaw from Jonesboro Baptist Church. You join us, sir, please, and thank you for being here.
We just had our meeting for November with the National Ministerial Association, and Reverend Jason Leonard will bring you your opening prayer for December.
Okay, all right.
So that's already arranged. I haven't gotten beyond December, but we will by the end.
All right.
Okay, let us pray. At this time of Thanksgiving, Lord, we come praising you, thanking you for giving us life, for giving us air, for giving us simple things that we just take for granted. But we thank you for the governance in this county, and we thank you for all of those who have chosen to live here. We thank you for our administrations in all forms, our police, our governors, our mayors, and the construction of the freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom to worship, and freedom to govern. We ask, Lord, that you be with this body tonight as they deliberate the things that are important in today's world. We thank you for their service, we thank you for their protection, we thank you for your love for all of us. There are so many things that we need to give thanks for, but we really want to give you thanks for allowing us to be here in this time. Every one of us has two periods. We did not choose those periods. We could have been born in the time of Simon Peter, we could have been born in the time of Abraham Lincoln, and certainly those have furnished why they were created. But you've chosen these times for us. May we so govern as we have seen them govern in past times throughout Virginia, throughout the United States. We ask your blessings upon us all, upon this body, as it considers the work it needs to do, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Bradshaw, great, appreciate that. Y'all join us for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank y'all for that. All right, board members, we need approval of the agenda, but I feel like there were some changes that we had here.
Mr. Chairman and board members, if we would, I would like for us to skip over I two, and that is the solar ordinance. I would like for us to seek some legal counsel in a closed session about that subject.
Okay, so we're gonna, what county administrator is asking is to remove that from tonight's agenda on the unfinished business. If the board so pleases, between the resolution, presentation, and delegation for the public, we can have a quick, a quick discussion about that, a date and time. And then, under new business, BJ two, a quick discussion about the county administrator's evaluation. Was there any other amendments or anything, y'all have any questions, anything? If not, could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Some move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved, the approval of minutes, y'all have that in your package, and if there's no questions or anything, I need a motion to approve the minutes, please, from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll some move.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the resolution presentation, and, um, let's see, where's that document at?
It's, I think it's in front.
Oh, oh, that's right.
This.
Okay.
Take it. And that right under there.
I'll be back for that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll have it out.
Okay. That's neat, I like that. Ah, here it is. All right. This is a resolution of appreciation, whereas Deanna M. Bryant has dedicated thirty-eight years of outstanding service to the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, demonstrating professionalism throughout her career, and whereas Ms. Bryant has consistently presented vital information to the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors on a monthly basis, as well as the county administrator on an as-needed basis, to ensure the community is up to date on projects that impact residents' lives, lives, and whereas her presentations have been personable and thorough, with an understanding of transportation issues and possible effects on Nottoway's rural lifestyle, and whereas Ms. Bryant's efforts have not only enhanced the board's knowledge, but also strengthened the relationship between VDOT and the community, and whereas she has exemplified the values of dedication and commitment, earning her the respect and admiration of local government officials and community members, now therefore be it resolved that the Nottoway County Board of Supervisors recognizes and honors Deanna M. Bryant for her exceptional service to the board and the citizens of Nottoway County, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby wish Ms. Bryant happiness and good health in her well-deserved retirement, done this day, the twenty-first day of November, twenty twenty-four, by unanimous board. Ms. Bryant.
Congratulations, dear.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one more thing. She's, we've been very fortunate to have her at Nottoway County for all these years, she's, I think she's on the line right there at Neil Millian, and she lives on Namazin Road, so we thought it would be very appropriate to give her a VDOT retirement sign, and we did not steal it.
Thank you, dear.
All right. Whatever time, good job.
Thank you. And if there's anything you'd like to say, feel free. I do have one more thing, if you don't mind. Your husband's here, Ms. Bryant, could you come here for one second? On behalf of the citizens of Nottoway County, we appreciate you having her, allowing her to, us to have her, and we would like to give you this pen of Nottoway County.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Enjoy, enjoy y'all, your retirement, and, hey, now I know what road that garden is on. I keep seeing the pictures on Facebook, I know what road it's on now.
All right, don't go, don't go anywhere yet, you still gotta work tonight, you know that, right?
And Ms. Bryant, if you have anything that you'd like to say right now, or you could use it in your spot for your update, but if you'd like to say anything now, you're welcome to come to the podium.
Well, I'm going to just say how much I appreciated the consideration from the, the board and county administrators that I've worked with over the years. You know, everybody's always been cordial to me and everything, we've always worked really well together, and I am gonna miss that, so, but thank you, I, y'all kinda on blind side of me with that one, so.
Good.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, dear, you deserve a welcome, please give her another round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Years of dedication like that are gonna be hard to come by in the future.
Amen.
Okay, the discussion real quick, for the solar board members, on December the fifth, at seven P. M., in the general district courtroom here, that's two Thursdays from now, we are going to have a public hearing on the proposed solar ordinance.
Just wanna make sure, Ms. Kelly, that gives you enough time to advertise properly, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and there may be a second, but we won't get into that, there may be a second item on that public hearing, but we'll address that after, after our closed session. But right now, just so the public will know, and if anybody has signed up to speak about the solar tonight, you're very well, you can still do that, but December fifth is gonna be the public hearing at seven P. M. right here in the general district courtroom. All right, with that being said, the delegation's from the public, Ms. Susan Yates.
Hi, I'm Susan from Crewe, Susan Yates from Crewe, and I know for years I've been coming up here, and I'm probably your biggest critic, and feel so strongly that citizens have to hold their elected officials accountable. But unlike usual, I'm not coming up here to complain. I'm coming up here to tell Daphne Norton how proud I am of her. As you all know from the newspaper, she just complained, I'm gonna read it, 'cause I'm not, you know, she just received, completed a course to become a certified supervisor. And it says here in the paper, she completed the revamped Virginia Certified County Supervisor's Program, sponsored by the Virginia Association of Counties, ORVACO. I know, because I'm a friend of Daphne's, but I'm not doing this 'cause I'm a friend of Daphne's, it's not why I'm doing it. I know how many nights she stayed up till two and three o'clock in the morning reading books, and I know how many times she went to a meeting to learn to be the best supervisor she could be. And if anyone in this audience has ever seen the Supervisor's Handbook, it's this thick in tiny print, but you can be assured that Daphne Norton knows what's in that book, and I'm proud of you for that, Daphne. And as a citizen of Nottoway County, I want to give you these flowers, and it's just a small token of my appreciation. I love flowers and birds more than anything, I think they're too of God's greatest gifts, outside of our children, and so I just wanna give these to you today. Before I came here tonight, I was trying to think of something special and to say, and I thought, well, I'll look up and see what each one of these flowers has a meaning. And I thought, no, that's kinda dumb, 'cause I don't even know what all the flowers are in there, a couple of them, but I don't know all of them. So I took to the colors, and there's fuchsia in here, which represents confidence and assertiveness. The purple stands for wisdom and spirituality. And no matter how many times she invites me to come to her church, and how many times I say, no, Daph, you don't want the church to burn down, she just keeps on gently nudging me. The yellow inspires happiness and hope, and I think Nottoway needs happiness and hope. And the pink inspires love and compassion, and I think Daphne represents all these qualities. So, I wanna give them to you, if that's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Yates.
And one last.
Blindsided.
And one last thing, I would like to recognize Bill Collins for being by her side when she earned her award. I'll speak for her, that meant a lot, and what it tells me is that you're a team player, because all of you guys have to be a team player, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. We agree, we, we agree to disagree, and she's ripped me a new one a couple of times, but thank you for that, I appreciate it, all of us are a team, so, thank you very much.
Yes, and, uh, congratulations as well, Ms. Norton, I, I know that some of the board members have some thoughts that they were gonna pass on to you as well during our comments, so, we'll address that then. Mr. Vince Gibbs.
Sorry, how you doing?
Hey, how's it going?
Vince, Vince Gills?
Gibb, Gibb Gibbs.
Vince Gill, I wish I had.
If you were gonna sing for.
Don't have his guitar.
So, my name is Vince Gibbs, as you know, I am a resident currently of Houston, Texas, I've come a long way, I wanna speak on the ordinance, the solar ordinance, and I hope you will receive this. I am a son of Virginia, I grew up in Chesterfield County, went to Thomas Dale High School, since, before I moved to Houston, I spent twenty-five years in Oakland, California, where I also served on planning commission, so, I appreciate the work that you do, and the dedication and time away from your families. So, I, I, I come here to speak on behalf of solar. I understand that there's a lot of concern, I also understand that there is a lot of misinformation, and I urge the board and any of the community members who have those feelings that solar is bad, or are confused about what solar is, to allow us to dialogue. That's all we ask, is that we have open dialogue, and before you make your deliberation, consider some of the positives. I know a lot of negatives have been brought out here, and for every negative, there's probably ten positives that you may not have heard of. For instance, one of the things that solar can do, and the project that we have in mind in particular, we've calculated that there's at least thirty million dollars worth of benefits, tax benefits, that can be added to the, the tax rolls, that can potentially offset some of the increases that I know all of you residents have felt recently, or future increases that are gonna go towards the library, the animal shelter, what are some of the other things, the EMS system, and improvements to this very ground that we stand on, I know you guys wanna do some upgrades to the courthouse. Those things can, I'm not gonna say that solar is going to solve all of your problems, however, there are some positives that I wish you would consider, that may neutralize some of those negatives that you're feeling. So, um, yeah, that, that's the main crust of it, I've also heard that one of the things that you would like to have is a solar farm here, something that has been vanted around. I wanna bring to your attention that there is no server farm that does not also come with a generation facility, because they consume enormous amounts of energy. And if it's not us that builds a solar farm to accommodate one of those, or the grid at large, they're going to ask you to build one of their own. I know this for a fact, because Facebook has done it on a project that we were working on, but not the present company I'm working for, but a previous company I worked for. Facebook, Amazon, all of them are in the energy business, because it's an energy-intensive project. So, in closing, I would just, you know, urge you, beg you, please, just talk to us. We don't have to agree on everything, we can agree to disagree, but I think it's in the best interest of the board and its decision-making capacity, and the community at large, that we enter into a dialogue where we openly discuss the issues, and let the chips fall where they may. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you, anybody have anything?
Who do you work for, sir?
Company's called Amplifarm.
You got a plan, you have a site picked in Nottoway County?
Absolutely, sir, it's probably one of the best sites you're gonna find to buffer from visual impacts, from an environmental standpoint, we have, we're conducting studies to.
Where's this firm, where's this gonna be, you proposing to locate this?
Mr. Tatum's property.
Who?
Dennis Tatum's property. It's, but if you know where the rails.
I know exactly where it's at.
So it's behind that.
And you know the creek that runs to, the Crewe water source goes right through that property, you know that?
We will avoid that, we will avoid that, the regulations with DEP require that we observe that, I know that there's been talk of negative impacts from a toxic perspective, the panels that we use are not toxic. There's a, a, a technology called cadmium tell, cadtell, we call it, that could be toxic if the panels are breached, but we don't use that technology, and even the Department of Energy and the Department of Agriculture has cited, in many studies that I can share with you, that it is not toxic even if they're breached.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Robert Hawthorne, Jr., I make sure to include the junior.
Distinction that I appreciate being made, knowing who, knowing who the senior is. I came here to briefly mention three things, but I'm gonna add a fourth, class move by Sue Yates. I've, I've seen a lot of instances at, at, um, local government meetings, I'm sure Gary has too, where behavior is, including sometimes my own, is less than admirable, but that was, that was a nice, nice move, and I'm glad to see that from her. So I appreciate, appreciate her doing that, and I hope y'all do too. First thing was, thank y'all for your hard work, particularly when it comes to solar, we've come a long way, it's been a long time, it's been a five, six-year saga, Steve, something like that, and, and y'all have come a long way, and I'm appreciative of all of you being willing to talk and discuss the subject in general, and sometimes a specific project. And now you're, it looks like you are willing to consider some projects. I'm reminded of that quote from Shawshank Redemption, where Morgan Freeman tells Tim Robbins when he's at the rock wall, and he uncovers the box that Morgan Freeman has hidden in the ground, most of y'all probably seen that movie, and, and he opens up the letter by saying, well, you were willing to come this far, maybe you're willing to come a little farther. The ordinance you have needs, needs some work, if you really are truly interested in considering small solar projects. The way it is constructed now eliminates any chance of those projects going forward, so it's gonna need some significant, some significant tweaks. I think there's also an interest in maybe qualifying for some siting agreements, but the solar ordinance, the way it's drafted, doesn't do that, you have to be more than five megawatts to merit a siting agreement, and that's where your real, real money comes in. You know, a project like what Mr. Gibbs was talking about, that's, that's large money for large projects. These small projects will help us do little modest projects of our own, county projects, it can fund, these small projects, solar projects can fund small county initiatives, but they're not gonna cure the tax burden, only the larger projects will do that. But, so, the third thing I want to bring up is, three years ago, two years ago, John Anzavino was tasked, after he stepped down as county administrator, with coming up with a solar ordinance, that this county paid consultants to help craft, your own experts, and I would like for some of you all to revisit that, look at it, think about it. It was a solar plan and an ordinance that made a lot more conventional sense and mimicked what most all the counties around us have done, and it's got some pretty strong protections in there for the county, but it doesn't make it unworkable like your current ordinance does, but we'll talk about that more in December. Most of all, I'm just thankful that you all have put in the time, a lot of you all I have talked with on an individual basis over the years, and, and I appreciate all the efforts that you all are making, I think you're certainly moving diligently and deliberately, and I am, as a Nottoway homeowner and a Nottoway business owner, I'm proud of the board in that regard, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hawthorne. All right, board members, we're gonna.
Any questions for Mr. Hawthorne Chairman?
I'm sure you have.
Mr. Ingram had a question for the other fellow.
He knows my questions.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
At the work session, I was wrong when we said it at five megawatts, and I said that you could get us. and I said that you could get a siting agreement at 5. I read the code, Mr. Hawthorne was correct. More than 5.
So, 5.1 about.
5.01. But you can get a siting agreement, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hawthorne. Let me find it in here. There's a comprehensive plan review where you could be below 5?
I will tell you this, and I'm not an expert on that. I think there are workarounds. Some counties didn't essentially more than-
Well, I know that Prince Edward got siting agreements, they got a 4 megawatt.
Well, they just ignored the law.
And a 3 one too, I think, right?
They got-
Yeah, I think that Prince Edward essentially just says, "We don't care about that."
5 megawatt or less require an additional review, 15.2-2232, comprehensive plan, public hearing, environment impact. So, there is something in the code that gets you a siting agreement under 5 megawatts. It does make the companies go through some additional-
And there are ways of extracting benefits for the county akin to a siting agreement with the smaller projects. I didn't mean to say there were none, of course.
I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that I was wrong at the work session, that 5 megawatts and up, or 5.01 is where the code-
Unless you ignore the law.
Unless you ignore the law.
Which, as we already know from the actions of the board today, y'all don't want to do.
Right.
But, I mean, you could tweak it. Right now, the ordinance wouldn't allow anything over 5. You can tweak it as far as buffers and given the topography. But you could tweak it to say, you know, 5 and 1/2, 6 megawatts, or something like that, and then sneak in that way.
This is, solar's the thing that just keeps on giving. It's like helicopter, helicopter, just keeps going around and around.
And where we are now is going to be way different than where we are one or two years from now. Dicky once asked me, was I, you know, was I a seer? And no, I'm not. But I am, I do know that things are going to develop in ways that we don't anticipate. They're going to develop.
The two main things that drive solar, well, one main, the main thing, the only thing that drives solar is-
Absolutely.
That's all. I heard the gentleman say that there was a lot of positive impact. Well, money is a lot of positive impact, but that's about all it is to it. Because I got a few phone calls today regarding solar, and one I wanted to ask you was, is the DEQ site violations. This particular person told me there were several site violations in Sussex County, the adjacent county, and all they did was pay the fine. They didn't make the corrections.
That's right.
And they was within the law by paying the fine. So, if I go down the road and I don't have a driver's license and I get charged with driving on a suspended driver's license, there's no fine that I just pay and continue to drive on a suspended driver's license. I got to make a correction. Why don't they have to make a correction?
Well, in some cases, they can be required to make a correction.
Can be required.
How the DEQ chooses to enforce the law, I guess, is up to the DEQ. But you look at any-
But it's cheaper to pay the fine and move along. That's the way they're looking at it. Except, a paper said down there that it was cheaper for them to pay the fine, don't do the dirt work, don't fix the basin, and move along. Well, that's not fair.
But you can, because the industry will pay for you to have the consultants that enforce the laws the way y'all want them to be enforced.
Nobody sure makes a whole lot of county residents read about them and come to us saying, "We don't want solar at all."
Not everybody practices law the same way. And sometimes lawyers screw up, and lawyers get reprimanded. And, you know, we have lawyers mess up. Construction projects of all sorts have DEQ violations.
Well, human beings mess up in general.
You look into any aspect of any industry, there's going to be DEQ violations on any construction.
But we want to continue this conversation?
They do, but they have to make the correction. The farmer has to make the correction, generally.
But you go look at some of the corrections and that the NRCS will make you do. And I'm a farmer, I understand.
You know about it.
And it makes you scratch your head, well, what did you really accomplish? I'll give you another, just a personal example.
All right, hang on, gentlemen, can we continue this conversation at the public?
Well, I think this is going to help us going forward, so we'll have some answers for the summer fit.
Well, the big thing about the farmer is they can't afford to pay the fine, so they fix it.
Yeah, right. Well, some of them still get fined and still got to fix it.
Exactly.
They have finance to find, too.
I'll give you, in-
The NRCS will.
Supporting what you're saying, I'll give you a quick little anecdotal story, a personal story. A group of us bought a defunct dairy farm in Brunswick County, and it had one of those catch ponds. And it was during a drought, and that catch pond would not dry up, would not dry up. And one of the group went out and just took a grub and hoe and started busting it.
A catch pond or lagoon?
Well, a lagoon.
Okay.
Yeah, a lagoon. So, I mean, it just had that film over it, it wouldn't evaporate or anything. It's just water and manure. And it had, it caused elevated levels downstream, not illegal levels, but elevated. So, clearly, it was causing. And so, we went to visit DEQ and said, you know, what do we do? And DEQ said, "Well, we're going to break the pond, we're going to break the dam." And I said, "Well, that's what we were doing." And he literally said, "Yeah, but now you have our permission." So, so I would-
That is your government, my friend.
I agree, which is why I like local control. I don't want to see solar handed to the SCC. I want to see it stay in the hands of the county. But that's what we're going to be looking at if we don't play ball. But anyway, I'm sorry. You're right.
Thank you. Thank you. I thank you for answering that. That'd help us with this summer fit.
Thanks for y'all's time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, going on to presentations, the building permit explanation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've asked a building official, Nick Bowles, to come tonight. We get, I got this saying, kind of a simple saying, "What you don't know, you don't know." And a lot of citizens, I think, really are not trying to get around to building permit. They just don't know what's necessary.
I'm finding out.
You're finding out.
I'm finding out right now.
So, I've asked Mr. Bowles to give a presentation tonight, and then try to, we're trying to reach out, we want to reach out more to y'all, you know, the citizens of Nottaway and say, "Hey, we're not here to get your moment, we're here to help you." So, I've asked Nick to do that presentation, but thank you, sir.
All right. You look different. You look younger. Most people's jobs make them look older and turn gray. This job is, hey, it's grown on you very well. You look younger.
I have a flyer just giving the information about when do you need a permit, if I may give it to you.
Sure.
I think I've got enough copies.
Is this on the website, the county's website?
Okay.
So, this is something that I'm very passionate about. I love my job. I think that what I get to do is a privilege and an honor, and I could talk about it all night. But I wrote it down, and I'm just going to present based on what I've written. I think that's probably the best thing to do, so if you'll allow me.
Sure.
Greetings to you all. My name is Nicholas Bowles. I have the honor to serve Nottaway County as the building official. It is my privilege to stand before you here tonight and talk about the building department. Before starting my career in code enforcement as an inspector in Huraca County, I knew very little about how local government impacted my life. Five years as an inspector and now two years as a building official have given me a greater appreciation for our system of government. I hope to increase your interest in your local government by the end. And this is more to everybody than just you, you all here. Instead of focusing on just permitting, I propose to give an overview. The agenda topic will be covered, but I hope to give context. As a husband and father of six, I appreciate how valuable your time is. I will attempt to be clear and concise. Tonight, I will be laying out a quick sketch of where the building code comes from. I propose to answer the question, how does the building code impact us as citizens? And finally, I want to give a vision for the future of the building department. The Code of Virginia gives the Virginia Board of Housing and Community Development its authority. I will read the purpose, which is stated clearly in Section 102.1 of the Uniform Statewide Building Code. In accordance with Section 36-99 of the Code of Virginia, the purpose of the USBC is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Commonwealth of Virginia, provided that all buildings and structures should be permitted to be constructed at the least possible cost consistent with recognized standards of health, safety, energy conservation, and water conservation, including provisions necessary to prevent overcrowding, rodent or insect infestation, and garbage accumulation, and barrier-free provisions for the physically handicapped and aged. This is our goal in Nottaway, and I take this as our mission statement. Two key organizations in the code development process are the International Code Council and the Virginia Building Code Officials Association, BBCOA for short. The former is where the code comes from, and the latter is how Virginia-specific amendments are proposed and approved during a three-year process. Our building department enforces the state, or the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code. Our department has been given the responsibility by the state of Virginia to establish a department and administer the code enforcement in Nottaway. The county serves as the building department for the towns and the county as a whole. It is important to make the distinction that there are four governments in the county. My role as the building official is created and defined by the code, and it basically states, "I'm to enforce the code." What needs a permit? The code provides a list of what needs a permit. The list is short. It essentially lists construction, alterations to building systems, changes to fire and life safety, changes of occupancy, and altering egress out of a building. The list of exceptions is thorough. Both lists are available in a flyer that we have created, and that's what I just gave to you. There is one exception for having a permit before work starts, and that's an emergency. A burst pipe, for instance, is an example. Just turn in the permit application the next business day. I personally review plans, inspect, perform site visits, and administer the process. Our permit technician receives and reviews paperwork, communicates with the customers, and handles the department records. Reporting to an accident or fire, responding to a complaint, and finding out how to follow up with unpermitted work are part of what we get to do here. I'm always on call, and I'll do my best to respond quickly. Remember, the USBC is the law of Virginia. The local building department is the enforcement agency. The code is to protect health, safety, and the welfare of the citizens. Notices are going out around the county for nonpermitted work. We've begun sending these either based on complaints or for things that our department has witnessed. We welcome feedback on the manner that this news is delivered. If you've received one of these, thank you for your prompt responses. We regret to reach out to our citizens in this way, but are thankful for the responses. If you've not responded for one reason or another, our office will be following up with you. There's a long history of tragedies that have brought about the development of building codes. Through the years, people like Benjamin Franklin have considered ways to be pro and reactive by implementing things like lightning rods and developing a fire brigade. A recent example is the Station Nightclub Fire in Rhode Island. 100 people lost their lives due to building and fire codes being ignored. If you want to be sobered about what can happen, there is footage to be found on the internet. Please watch it at your own discretion, because it is truly terrible. God forbid that anyone ever experienced something like this again, but it takes all of us. Educate yourself and be aware of your surroundings, and if you have questions, ask. This is not a fun conversation. The expression that the code is written in blood is true. Remember that the fire and emergency services are reactive, because sometimes bad things happen. The building department and you work at the front end. Another aspect of the USBC is the statewide fire prevention code. The state fire marshal office currently provides enforcement, and you can contact their office if you have concerns about fire safety. The SFPC is a maintenance code, and is fire-specific and can be adopted by the county for a local enforcement approach. I note, each town has adopted the property maintenance code, which is Part 3 of the USBC. This allows citizens to voice concerns about things not being in accordance with the purpose statement, as mentioned earlier. Everything from damaged buildings to bed bugs. To the county, it is a pleasure serving you. We are constantly training and learning how to be better. We partner with state and local agencies to do this. To the towns, the building department can better serve the community by helping with property maintenance issues. Buildings that are or are becoming unsafe affect the whole community. To the citizens, we are building momentum in Nottaway and need your input on how to be better. It will take time and input from the citizens to make the kind of change that is lasting. And tonight, I spoke on the origin of the building code, its implications, how it impacts all of us, and the future for the building department in Nottaway. And thank you for your time. God bless you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
And look, and, you know, I couldn't help it. And of course, when we're talking health, safety, and welfare, and the god-awful incident up in Rhode Island, none of that is funny. But when we first started, I couldn't help but giggle a little bit because of a citizen that had come forward and was so irate about the building permit process. He was red in the face, he was screaming. I asked him, I said, "Are you going to Saturday Night Live skit right now?" And he, I mean, of course, it didn't help the situation. I think he got a little bit madder, but it's like I couldn't help but get to giggling at it just now thinking about it. And I was like, if he'd have just sit down and talked to him.
Right.
And it's like, it's that simple. But, yeah, I mean, it just kind of took me back. And I know you've all heard it, and it's unfortunate, but absolutely, I appreciate you bringing this forward. And if you said this is going to be on the website soon.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Anybody? Yes?
A lot of our landowners are agricultural. If you could add a paragraph about agricultural outbuildings and things like that?
Yes, sir.
I think there's some exemptions in there.
So, there are things that are exempt from the building code generally. And that's in Section 102.3 of the-
Okay, so that, you referenced that section.
Yes, sir. So, I'll do that.
And really, you could just put in, for agricultural exemption, C Section 1, you left there.
Yes, sir.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, thank you.
All right, y'all have anything else from Mr. Bowles? Okay, thank you, Nick. Appreciate you, man.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, y'all got your departmental reports, and we're going to start with Ms. Bryant from the VDOT. She's never been here before, so y'all bear with her.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening.
I have to say, it has been an honor.
Thank you, Tom.
It's hard leaving Steve Bowen, I know.
Oh, my God. I would not be surprised if she said you're-
Thank you, Rob.
It would be fitting if you said your report's in your book. Good luck.
No, I know it's hard. I know, don't it? We're going to miss you.
I think I could get through it now. Anyway, I'm going to go ahead and start with everybody's favorite project, the Route 46 Bridge. The work is still ongoing, and it is still scheduled for a spring completion date. So, as long as everything goes as expected right at this point, that's what we're looking at, spring '25. The Route 723-460R cut, as you know, we didn't get any bids on that when it was first put out. We did re-advertise it in November with bids to be received in December. The only change that was made to that was allowing a five-day detour instead of just a weekend detour. We feel like that will hopefully help contractors, give them a little bit more leeway for building there. The Route 40-750 Darvilles Road Roundabout, the development is still on schedule for that project, and still, the current advertisement is January 26. As far as the asphalt contract, the only thing that we have remaining is some pavement marking that still needs to be done, and the inlaid reflective markers. And that project will be finished. State forces, right now, they are mowing right-of-way to right-of-way on primaries. They're about halfway finished with that right now. They did have some equipment breakdowns, so hopefully, we'll get back on that here shortly. We are pulling some shoulders on primary routes and adding some material to those. We'll be doing some upcoming tree work on both primaries and secondary routes now that the band is lifted for the Long Ear Bat. I know y'all have heard of that one. So, we're clear to go on that, so you'll be seeing some tree work here soon. The Chute Road Speed Study has been sent to Traffic Engineering for review. That can take 90 days, once it gets in the queue, so hopefully, it'll be quicker than that, but... And the mile markers, last but not least, the mile marker project that we're working on for Route 460 and Route 360. They have been marked. We're working on ordering the signs right now. And once the signs come in, the installation will begin. And once the installation is complete, the list of mile marker signs, along with the coordinates, will be provided to emergency management and the sheriff's office. So, and that is all that I had for you today. Do you have anything for me to pass along to?
Do I have anything to pass along, board members?
I do have, I have one question.
Okay.
Our very first bullet point, it always makes me sad to think that that much trash gets thrown on our roadways, 219 trash bags. In our book, we have some grant money to help with that. Do you have any examples of what other counties have done as far as an anti-litter program?
Well, I mean, we have the, we have the Adopt a Highway. Well, I mean, we have the, we have the Adopt a Highway, which is with litter pickup. As far as anti-litter, I don't...
That's what the grant is, Stephen. There's a little bit of money for...
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think we utilize it. I gotta do some research on that, Mr. Collins. But I don't, we never utilized with VDOT and any type of partnership with that.
No, not that I'm aware of. We do have requests sometimes for anti-littering signs. And if it's an area that sees constant and excessive littering, we'll review those. But there's not a lot...
So just some signage and then the Adopt a Street.
So we're looking, so we need to figure out a way, how are we spending that anti-littery, litter funds is what you're asking. Okay, let me do some... I know we just received a grant this recently, but I have not, I haven't done enough digging to find out how we, how we actually spending that. But I'll answer that and give y'all, send out something to you.
Maybe some signage. I know going in, I know going into my convenience center, if that's not open, they dump it on the shoulder.
Yeah, well, you know, that's a good point. Could start putting signs right in the convenience center itself. But you know, but you know, I don't know. You know, that's one of them things, Mr. Collins, that just bothers me. We have to tell people not to do.
I know. That's two-hundred and...
A lot of mattress pickups.
Two-hundred-and-nineteen trash bags.
Right.
I would beg to thank you for that because VDOT's work order system is really beneficial on Bible Road, my road, and Tyler, the corner. We have had multiple issues lately, which was in the VDOT right away, and I apologize, but it's the ruling. So they've come immediately and picked it up, and we appreciate that.
One mattress becomes two mattresses and then three mattresses.
It's been more than mattresses.
One of our old squirrel sheriffs, Brett Saunders, used to go through the trash to find a name. And he went and issued a summons to the resident. Game one, conservation. I need to get that...
That was all I had. True is true.
Well, if nobody has anything, again, Ms. Bryant, you're going to be deeply missed. But you are, you have earned your retirement.
Thank you.
If you get bored...
I appreciate it.
If you get bored, I know where you're going to be in that garden.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Steve, you got anything on the solid waste?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything?
Nick's gone.
Anything from the school board? I know y'all ain't sitting here just to look at Steve and eyes, great looks.
Dr. Martin's here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Bowen. So tonight, I just want to highlight one of our new programs that we have at the high school this year. It's our Cougar Cafe. You may have recently seen it on CBS Channel 6. They were highlighted recently for their work that they have done. So the original idea was just a simple coffee cart. But with teamwork and creativity of our two teachers that have taken it over, Madeline Duffy and Lauren Moreno, they transformed the old-school store in the high school into a full cafe atmosphere that offers more than just coffee and creamers. And it's just a dynamic little space for learning and community engagement. Currently, we have 13 students that are part of that program right now. And the goal of the program or the cafe is to provide students with real-life work experience while helping them develop the essential life skills that they need, including math skills, such as measuring and budgeting, as well as reading and social skills. Some of their next steps and highlights, they plan to get involved in community events and explore opportunities to set up at just various things like rec basketball. They've asked to set up there on Saturday mornings to sell their coffee. And they're hoping to do something with Grand Illumination and possibly at the parade. The students are thriving as they work together and take pride in the joy that they bring to others through their coffee deliveries. So it just started at the high school, but now they actually visit every school in the county throughout the week with their coffee and also the school board office. And as I said, CBS 6 highlighted them on the 18th of November, and they actually came back today to the school and highlighted them again with a $200 gift card to support their efforts that they have. And that will actually be aired on December 2nd in the evening and December 3rd in the early morning. So they started about October the 28th, and since then, they've sold about 306 coffee, tea, and hot chocolate orders between all the schools, the school board office, and the Fall Festival, which is pretty remarkable because that's a short period of time, and you think they don't do it but a few days a week, and they go out. So they do hope to grow it, and it was funny, Mr. Ingram, I have to say. I told him today, I said, hey, you know what you could add to that? I said, Otis Spunkmeyer cookies.
I was going to say.
I said, now I'm dating myself with that. And Lauren Moreno said, well, you're dating me too because I sold them for him too. But I said, hey, that's a great thing to add to your coffee sales.
Absolutely.
Coffee and your cookie, because we can only sell it to staff, of course, with all of our food, nutrition, things that we have in place. But I really did want to highlight that. It is a joy to the school division to see our students setting this up, and they grow and blossom every single day with it. We encourage you, if you're near the high school, to stop in. They always will stop and take the orders in the morning if they need to for people that come in. So we want to highlight that program this evening for y'all.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's great, great, great deal going on there.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, it's no question for Dr. Martin or Heather Myers, I know, audience too. I just want to tell the board, you know, last, last month, sometimes it comes across that, you know, that... And I think sometimes the general public might see it as like the schools are the villain and the schools and the county administrator's office don't work well together. We work extremely well together, so I want you to know that. Little things, when I first come on board, you know, I needed, I needed, little things to big things. When I first come on board, I needed a whiteboard. And I asked Andrea, and she goes, well, let's see if the school system has one. And within minutes, they brought one up there. I mean, I had something that had to kick my brain in. I needed a whiteboard. That's just the way, that's the way I work. They've introduced, you know, social services. I'm trying to rent maybe a vehicle for social services. They introduced me to the gentleman with Enterprise. The SOR officers this year, they paid a hundred and, a little less than $102,000 for the SOR offices. That really should have been the county's responsibility. And this payment plan that we came up, you know, they, they have allowed, you know, I said, let's don't do it 12 months. We had, and we had multiple meetings to agree on this. You know, when we collect taxes in 2023, that takes us through the fiscal year of 2023. So if I started paying the school system what we owe them come July, August, September, I'm giving money that we collected in 2023, not what we're collecting in 2024. So I met with them and Heather, and Heather said, hey, Steve, how about if you start your payment in November? By the way, I think we owe a payment, right? Don't answer that. You don't get other things to worry about. But I'm just, I just want to, I want the general public to know it's, what you see sometimes in a courtroom or during a meeting, we work well together a lot of times. And we've had hard conversations. I've had hard conversations with Dr. Grimes, Heather. But we always shook hands and realized that we're trying to do the best what we can for them. And for the Notaway County citizens, they're doing the best what they can for the children, and we're trying to, we're trying to look at the tax rate and different things like that. So we have to, we have to work good together, and I just want to share that with the board. And if, I don't want any misperceptions that we don't get along.
That's right. And I agree. I think just in my short time here, I believe the school and the county's boards are probably closer than they have been. And it's, and I believe it'll continue to get even closer. I mean, because everybody's got one goal, move forward and do it together and find that harmony.
Yeah, thank you.
It truly is a partnership of working together because, I mean, our passion is our kids. They can show that they have everything that they possibly can have in Notaway to be successful so that they can get back later.
Absolutely.
Thanks for that leeway.
Marsha, if you want me to come and give some tips on Otis Spunkmeyer, I'll do it.
Okay.
I've got a picture on my refrigerator with me and my apron on and Rose's son sitting there next to me making, taking the cookies out. And we had, we had, we made a lot of money for scholarships doing that.
Can you bring that picture?
Kids loved it.
Can you bring a picture? I want to make you some Christmas cards with you.
Mr. Ingram would send us down there every day during business management.
I'm dating myself. We did the same. My class called it Cookie Bacon 101.
But truly thank you, and I would encourage you to stop by and experience. People tell us, I'm not a coffee drinker, but they said, they say it's better than Starbucks.
Wow.
And they...
If we do that, we just come to the office first?
Just come to the office and check in. They have specials that they run every week. Last week or the week before was sweater weather, and I mean, they're not just, it's not coffee. It's, I mean, it's all types of add-ins and things like that.
Just in the morning hours, is that right?
They just do it in the morning.
In the morning hours. From when to when, the timeframe?
They normally start, so the high school doesn't start till nine because we're on that two-tiered system this year. So from about nine to 10:30, they're doing it. So, but yeah, I would encourage you to stop by and see them. It is, it's very special.
You said not every day.
They do pretty much every morning. Some days, though, they're at a different school. So like, I think Wednesday, yesterday, they were actually out delivering at like the school board office. But I think they keep a couple back there to help with some of the stuff there too because they do get an abundance of coffee orders. So come try it out and see them. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Steve, you didn't mention the chairman of the school board. Is he pretty cordial to work with as well? You mentioned Dr. Grimes.
Yeah, he, he comes to the office and attempts to get me straight on this. So we have some, we had those hard conversations.
Don't poke the bail.
Don't poke the bail.
All right. All right, going on to the planning economic development. Do we have anything on that, Mr. Bowen, Mr. Loady?
Mr. I have nothing to say, but I would like to give a few to Mr. ...
Bowles, yeah. Sure, okay.
Is it the risk of wearing out my welcome? I probably should have said this just during the presentation, but I just wanted to say that I really appreciate Mr. Hyde and all the folks in the Fire and EMS service. They've been working really hard with us to make sure that we're alerted to when there is a fire or an emergency so that we can respond and then make sure that that doesn't happen again by just something getting swept under the rug. We've had two fires just in the last week, and we've had to flacker the building. Folks have lost everything, and so I hate to add a layer of bureaucracy, but it's just one of those things that we just want to make sure that they go back into a safe home or the house is removed. And also, just as far as the report, Melissa, our permit technician, she's currently in core training with DHCD, the Code Academy. And so that's the first step in her getting certified as a permit technician, so there's that.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Hyde, do you have anything, sir?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening.
Staff and assistants. I'm glad to be back with you. I think last month I had a little bout there with COVID, so the doctor said. But anyway, we're back, and it's been a fast month since then. So you have my reports, so I don't really have to play catch-up from last month. But I do want to highlight a couple of things that's not in, necessarily in the report of your board packet. One thing I think you'll enjoy hearing, and especially Mr. Collins, you know, we did get the extension on the grant, you know, the $1 million grants. We put in for that, and I wasn't able to report that last month, but that did come through. It was approved to go to December 31 of '25. So we have that along to draw down that $1 million from the Department of Justice. So that's, that's really good because we were worried about that, you know, the deadline was going to be next month. So we were glad about that.
That's good.
Also, one other highlight, we've been meeting with Fort Barfoot Airfield Ops people. We're getting ready to have a multi-casualty drill out at the Barfoot airstrip at the Allen Perkins Airport, Blackstone Army Airfield, whichever name you want to use for it, on December 10th. And if it's raining, we'll do it on the 12th, and this is good. This is something we're doing with the military. You know, just kind of goes, this is a good time of year. Last year, you know, we had a couple mass casualty. We actually had three mass casualty drills at Burkeville Elementary School. But this puts it to an aircraft-type scenario, and we've been coordinating with that. But again, the lead on that is Fort Barfoot, and what we're going to be doing, I'm helping to liaison the resources that we would have. It looks like what we'll probably do, if they have the daytime resources, Tuesday morning, it's kind of like real world, you know, it's a lot of minimal staffing on Tuesday morning, but we're going to have probably Blackstone Fire Department there. We'll probably have Notaway Emergency Squad. And then, of course, the Fort Barfoot Fire and EMS Service is already there. The next thing is I wanted to, and to echo what Mr. Bowles said, it's all about teamwork. And we really, we really do work good together. And the other night when we had that, we had that fire during the day, but we also had a car into a building at Blackstone Manor Apartments. So he and I starting to get a little bit more frequent with this. And I've worked with building inspectors in my previous jobs, and it's just a pleasure to, you know, have them come out on stability issues because a car in a building, we've had one in the laundry mat at Blackstone one night, he came out. But we're able to, we're on a cell phone now, and we notify, try to notify each other of what's going on in our areas of work. The Notaway Public Schools, Dr. Martin mentioned how we all work together, and Mr. Bowen, something that citizens also need to know, that we work really good with Robbie Templeton. Our departments work with him on the maintenance side, and we work with Jay Strausser on the, on the mobile transportation side. So what I'm working with both of them on now is trying to get an old-school bus to where we can put it now in our training center. So we'll have a prop, this old Notaway school bus. So we're working now. Jay just got rid of a few, and unfortunately, we didn't catch them before they go to the salvage yard. But I'm reaching out, and he hooked me up with the gentleman that came to get those. So we're going to try to do that. And then also, we're getting some old café tables for the training center. Just some recycling of some of the school goods that we have. And Robbie showed those to me out at the school bus garage this past week. We have new recruitment signs made for the volunteers, all four agencies patches on it. Mountain Creek Signs did that for us, and we have distributed those this week for recruitment. I went to Buckingham yesterday, Monday, and we had a meeting of all of the counterparts in my position. So we had five, six counties there, and they're battling with the same things that we are. You know, staffing levels, money, et cetera, et cetera. But Cumberland's getting ready to get the solar farms in. They're getting 10. And so what he had asked was, is there any emergency response to solar or battery powers or anything, whether it's vehicles, whether it's panels in a field, whether it's battery backups and so forth? Well, I've had those classes in my past, and so I shared with him, the person at Dominion Energy that actually had that class. So I hooked him up with Dominion to get that class for them so that, I just want you to know that whatever we do, you know, we've had that class, and we have been talking to the firefighters about whatever comes along, whatever that is. And even the cars out here, even if we don't have panels to fight, the cars are a concern of ours. A lithium ion is a real concern. So I talked to Jay Strausser as well when I was down at the school bus garage. And Jay says these Thomas buses have lithium ion batteries that go under the entire distance of bus. And so when you buy a bus at about 150 or 60, and you know, these are just rough figures. He said about half price is the battery. And so when you go to put a battery in, you put the battery under the whole bus. So certainly, there's no plans to have electric buses, I will say that.
Go back to Fred Flintstone in it.
Right, that's exactly right. So those are things that firefighters are talking about, and that's why I wanted to mention it to you. The meeting we had this week, and I'll close up on these couple of thoughts. We have formed a new standard operating guidelines committee. Each one of the fire departments and EMS agencies has given me one name. We got a super team. I call it a dream team. And I'll help facilitate that, but we're going to have someone in every representation, plus the 911 center. We're going to have one representative from there, and we write these standard operating guidelines together. We're looking at, we identified top five issues that we need, and we're shooting for January to have those done, and then we're going to keep writing after that. So that was really good. And then we also, you know about the going to Tennessee and going to North Carolina. And I think Mr. Bowen wanted me to just touch on that really quick. You saw what was in the paper. You saw what was on Facebook. I had a chance to go with Burkeville down to Irwin, Tennessee. We had a great trip. We went down on October 25th, early in the morning. We got back early in the morning on the 26th, around 2:00 a.m. back to Burkeville. We carried a Penske truck full of fire equipment. We carried the Burkeville fire engine, a 1996 fire engine that they donated. And all of that went to Irwin, Tennessee. I want to point out, though, that all four agencies in Notaway County donated something. And it was a lot, but it was all outdated equipment. It was things that were in back rooms. It was things that, you know, by law, we shouldn't be using every single day on the scene. But when you have a disaster that wiped out like Hurricane Helene did, they just didn't have anything. Fire trucks went down the river, hose went away, even a complete fire station went away in Elk's Poga, Elk Mills Poga. And what we did is crew sent a whole pallet load of hose down to Elk Mills Poga, North Carolina. So we loaded that up. Ron Basinger got that over to Halifax County. And Halifax County down in Midway, you know, between Clarksville and South Boston, took a load. So crews went with that load. Then the next week, we all went down with the Burkeville load. Crew put some more on that. So Blackstone had air packs, hose, small equipment, Burkeville the same, crew the same. So all three fire departments. And then Notaway Emergency Squad made a trip with three people to Black Mountain and also to Chimney Rock, where a nursing home had been wiped out. Everybody had left and, you know, basically had no staff. They had food, water issues, and our Notaway Emergency Squad people have made two trips down there and give them some medical supplies, some drinking water, et cetera. So these were all donated items from the local departments, as well as southern states in Burkeville and some other merchants that were able to some... and some other merchants. They were able to, some churches donated. And of course, we all made the trip down there. And then last, today, we met with the, I met with Sheriff Jones and we were working on the maps. And the map should be finished for GIS for fire and EMS response, so that we can load those into our CAD system. So Sheriff Jones and I met today and we're going to make a law enforcement layer to go along with the fire layer and the EMS layer. And I have a meeting on Monday morning with Chief Murphy, Chief Morgan, Chief Hurlong and Sheriff Jones. We're going to all get on a call together and go over that. And that should finish our maps up and then we'll be able to put it into the system. And then can I, if I could enter the bench, what I'd like to do is start, we'll give it to Mr. Toth, I only have one copy, but if we pass that down. We have problems sometimes with people calling control burns in and actually letting our dispatchers know that. So there's a policy already in place. I get a lot of calls as fire, as to something is burning, you know, and you don't get notified when it's burning, what it's burning, and when it's going to be finished. So we typed this up.
Thank you.
And it's just a short blurb. And what we're going to do is go ahead and the chiefs are looking at it and we're going to put it up on Facebook. And it's a policy that's already in place, but we want to go ahead and put it out on Facebook, that if a citizen has something to burn, these are the steps, just simple steps, they were already in place. And that's really all I have, except Mr. Bowen, I do have a question. Were you going to cover, sir, the drought, the drought disaster designation? Were you going to cover?
Tonight, no, I was not.
Okay. I have that here.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I'm not.
You want to cover it in your report?
No, go ahead. You can do that. I'm fine with that.
Good news, Mr. Bowen, I want to put a kudos out for him, working with FSA Farm Service Agency up in Prince Edward. Mr. Bowen already had a good rapport with all of them and it runs over the Prince Edward Office. So he put the paperwork in and we had talked to several farmers that asked about drought designation, so you could put in for coverage. Mr. Bowen did the paperwork and we have a letter here from USDA and I'm going to go ahead. If I can enter the bench again?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. USDA letter that was addressed to.
That's a, that, that drought stuff is really tricky. Bo, I know y'all may have some background on that, but you know, they really, it's more than, it's other people leading that, that pack of what's allowed and what's not, you know?
It is. And sometimes if, not sometimes, all the times, if one county has been declared a drought, the adjacent county to that county is automatically eligible for
Right.
for certain relief.
But Buddy was giving me a lot of kudos there, but Buddy and I had conversations when, because we, I mean, we went through some dry weather and I was concerned about the hunt season was going to be, Mr. Collins might have been delayed there a little bit, but anyway.
Right. But many thanks for helping with that.
Yep.
To push it through. And it basically says in the last sentence that Notaway County is eligible to, to have loans for farmers because of it. So that's all I had, Board and Mr. Bowen. Is there any questions? Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Buddy.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, we're going to move on to the constitutional office. I believe the only one here is Sheriff Jones. Do you have anything, Sheriff?
No, sir.
All right. All right, so we're going to move on to the unfinished business portion of this. Mr. Ingram, Steve, Mr. Bowen, do y'all have anything on that?
Mr. Ingram, I'll get you started if you want to first. But in the meantime, if y'all would go turn to aisle one, I would appreciate, look at that, that's a draft, the animal shelter. Draft, first draft.
Yeah.
We've made some changes since then.
I was able to attend the meeting with the architect and I think it was his interior decorator that was with him.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Picking flooring and colors and that type of thing. It was very interesting. We had an expert there with us, Dr. Ann Carr, and she was giving her input. And of course, the animal control folks were there too. And we're thinking, hoping that we could bid it out at the end of January, first of February of next year. So there's a lot of things that have been, you know, done and suggested. And I tell you, that architect is very easy to work with. I was very impressed with him. He's, you know, he's common sense type guy. And then Mike Gentry said that he had met with their engineer and he was also a very common, common sense guy. So Sam's good from that point. I wanted to update you. I got an email yesterday. The cares committee has, has, as of yesterday, has raised $561,286.48. And the matching grant of $50,000 will run through, I think it's January 15th, I believe. So from the time they sent me this, I went to the meeting, they raised $11,000 more. So they're rolling. And just remember, if you want to donate, it's a match. If you give them $100, the person who made the grant will give them $100. So you're really giving them $200 if you make that. So keep that in mind. I don't have my little card here with it, with it on it, but I see it in places that I go. I'm glad they got it out there so people can see it. And you'd be amazed at how many people are putting money in those little containers at businesses. It's amazing. The people will see it and they'll stick a dollar in or quarters or whatever and it adds up.
Oh, sure.
So I'm really encouraged with this. I think it's going to be nice for the county. Steve and I had a little, well, we had a little input. So I think it's moving right along and hopefully we'll be able to bid it out into January 1st and February.
Right. And so just to piggyback, so the reason I wanted to point out to put the print into the package, I want to thank publicly Dr. Carr. She let Mike Gentry and I tour her facility and given inputs that, you know, that makes sense with an animal shelter and the flow. And just to give you a quick example, if you look at that print, you see the Sally Port and then, and then it is required to have an animal receiving area and you see that receiving area. And then right beside that is the medical isolation, which that's by code to, you got to have that room. And little things like, she said, move that tub, put another door there to go in the med isolation room, because you don't have to take the sick animal all the way around.
Right.
For others. I mean, little things like that, you're going to be surprised it's going to make a difference. And you want, and I feel like this, we got one, we got, I know what I feel. We got one shot to do this thing right the first time.
Yep.
And so, so we're taking, taking, you know, having more meetings and making sure we got this right. The cares group does want to donate money towards the front entrance to make it look more inviting and on the outside. December night, the architect is willing to come back down and meet with the cares group in my presence and Mike Gentry and of course, Mr. Ingram there. And, and they're also looking at paying for a generator. So, you know, so that's where we got to compromise. Well, maybe we'll, maybe we'll put the generator hookup in when the building's been renovated, but they'll put the generator in. So.
They're also talking about furniture and, you know,
Yeah, right.
when the public comes in, have a place to sit, so forth and so on. So they've got some ideas of their own about what they can donate and help us pay for. So that's really good, too.
Right. But anyway, just want to share that with you, Chairman. The IDA is, the IDA is organized, you saw that, and it's been, all of them have been sworn in. And that's where I'm looking to borrow money to renovate this building. So we're on, we're on track so far. So looking at February, maybe possibly put this thing out on, solicit for bids.
Good deal. All right, moving on to aisle three then. Ms. Norton, you had something on the planning and commission appointments?
Yes. I would like to recommend to the board, Mr. Brian Thomas. Mr. Thomas lives on West Maryland Avenue in Crewe and he also has a farm on Jennings Town Road. He's lived in Crewe, I think since 2012. He's a native of Colorado. He also, he and his wife have 30 some years. They enjoy the animals on the farm and all, but he's, he's very much in agreement. He came to our last board meeting, joint board, planning commission meeting. He's very excited. He had a 30-year career in IT application development. He's got a degree from Colorado State University in applied physics. Very intelligent man, but very down-to-earth man. And you all have seen his information. So I put his name as nomination to fill the open seat in District 3.
Okay. And Ms. Norton, are you putting that in the form of a motion, correct?
Yes.
All right, can I get a second on that?
I'll second. I know Brian well.
Okay, all right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Thomas, and thank you for being willing to serve, sir. Volunteerism is not just short in, on emergency services, it's short everywhere. But thank, thank each and every one of you that decide to step up and help when your name is called. I greatly appreciate it. And the citizens appreciate it as well. The school resource officer, school resource officer grant, Mr. Bowen?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, board members, I left that in there. I had a quick meeting with Dr. Grimes about, you know, I'm asking, could they help, you know, I mentioned that they paid for the SRO officers for this year of 101,000. I think it was 20 some thousand for this position. They got a lot of pressing issues they're dealing with right now, which is, you know, was probably a bad time in asking. The other, the other thing is, even if they do help us, you got to know, and the sheriff put that in there, he's going to need another vehicle. So I like to, the orders just showed up, the orders came again this week. We still got some more reconciling we have to do. I really need to get a handle on our finances before I give you a recommendation. So I like just leaving unfinished business if you're okay.
Sure, okay. All right. And then the accommodation committee appointments. Board members, we agreed that there would be two per district or three per district?
I thought it was two.
I thought it was two as well.
Okay. All right. I've got three. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go back and have a quick conversation with them and I'll have two for you.
You can, you can recommend one of mine.
Sure.
I would say pass it on. I'm, and I talked to Steve about this a little bit. I really would like some kind of guidelines as to what we're going to do with this. You know, because you certainly don't want it to be a popularity contest. You want it to be somebody that's, it's worthy and is getting, doing something for the people in the community. And, and you know, I think we ought to have some guidelines, because I've got some people in mind. First thing going to ask me is what I got to do.
Right. And I was thinking that if they're willing, they don't, in no words, once Steve would get them together, I think Steve was, the plan was, you would be there for the initial thing and let them kind of lay out and we can suggest some guidelines with them and then let them put that together.
But one thing, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but one thing that Mr. Rourke and I talked about, I would say, don't do a person, but maybe do an organization. You know, we talked about that.
We did talk about that.
Yeah, you know. And then if it changes to that later, but anyway, but I think it's enough organization, because I get what you're saying too, Mr. Ingram. And then you got to be careful of that, too.
Right.
If you, if you do it for certainly, like I say, a teacher who did 50 years of service and did other things, what about that other teacher that you left out?
See, that, that's.
And that's what you run into.
Right.
But if you talk about an organization, are you talking about from each district? You talking about having five organizations or let one organization?
Just one a year and then you say.
And you switch to another organization?
Right, right, right. But the committee decides that.
The committee will bring us recommendations on.
I'm trying to think of, anyway, I got to be careful I say things in public. But it may be something that really just.
We actually need some kind of guideline. Every committee has a mission statement, a purpose, what they're supposed to do. So we kind of need that in writing before we can go out and recruit people.
Oh, organization.
I get your idea and your thoughts, good, but we've got to have something attainable written before we can.
Yeah, I'd like to be able, if I go to somebody and ask them, would you be willing to serve, I'd like to be able to tell them exactly what we want them to do or what their job would be, you know, and go from there.
This is such new ground for us on county level. I don't even know if I got another copycat, I can copycat another county. But let me, let me, let me think on that one then. So, all right, hold your recommendations and then we'll have some more conversation.
Sure, okay. We'll just leave that unfinished business as well, even if we need to skip. All right, the opera funds, Mr. Bowen?
Yes, I'm just going to write a note on that other thing. All right, so if you would go to J1, this, this, you know, December, by December 30th of this year, I have to obligate funds for the offer money that's left. Ms. Kelly had done a lot of math here. As you can see, the totals that I have that's unobligated is $59,887.66. I know y'all don't want to give anything back to the government if we don't have to. What I would recommend to the board, if y'all, if y'all would be willing to do this, I like to take, I would like to obligate $10,000 to the, I call it the fire training center of that money. Is that the right terminology, Buddy?
Yes.
Okay. And I know y'all had looked at that. And then the remaining $49,887.66 to any environmental improvements to the existing complex, knowing that we're going to do a move. I still, I still got some environmental issues. As, as I do at the EOC itself, I still got to address. And I think I utilize that funding with that. So basically, I'm asking y'all to maybe give me the permission to, you know, get a vote for that, for obligating that opera fund.
All right, board members, y'all, y'all heard what he wants to do, the 10,000K to the fire training center and the 49,000 plus to the complex. It's the 49,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
All right, thank you, board members. That's going to make a lot of people happy.
All right. All right, the evaluation for the county administrator, board members, Ms. Norton and I, on the personnel committee, what we're going to, what I think we'll do then, is you and I can get together and draft a list of questions. We'll disperse it at the, any questions left off that the board members think we need to have added to that, we'll add it to that. And then we'll do the evaluation sometime between now and the end of January, something like that. Make sure everybody has time to have the input on the questions. We just want to make sure everybody's getting asked, answering the same question and rating the same. And then.
Does that occur during a closed session with the entire board or just the personnel?
No, the entire, the entire board needs to answer those questions because.
The personnel will develop the question and answers.
Okay. We'll put it together, but of course, with y'all's input, just kind of speed it along. And that way, we don't have to have any additional meetings or anything like that. We'll just put it together and make sure we are addressing all the issues and asking all the right questions. And also give Steve a chance to present something to us, or, you know, strengths, weaknesses, that type of deal. So, and we'll get that taken care of. Like I said, sometime between now and the end of January.
There, thank you, sir.
All right, yes, sir. All right, y'all seen the consent agenda? If, if you don't have any questions, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
At that 30, I just want to be, you know, I guess when people in health, we have a good insurance year, we overpaid. So that's a nice little check coming back.
Mm-hmm.
Good deal. $33,000.
Mm-hmm. All right, does anybody want to make a motion to accept the?
I make that motion.
Okay, can I get a second, please?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And your correspondence and informational items are in your packages. If there is nothing to address on there from any board members.
Senegro, top of the report says Henrico County.
It's, it's in the, it's self-explanatory account. You'll see it.
Okay.
All right.
I'm not sure this is our report.
What is that?
In the back.
I'm sorry, I was looking, what did she say, Mr. Collins?
Senegro Bio-Salads, I guess it's Bio-Salads.
Where'd you add in there?
Number five, L5.
L5. It says to Notaway County and then it's Notaway County cover page, but then the report says Henrico County.
Maybe that's where it's coming from.
Yeah.
A B.
There was, there was a town hall or something like that, to the extent down in Crewe last night.
Yes.
They had, yeah.
If you go to L5 on sheet L5, it addresses Notaway County. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the land applications that they want to do. But yeah, the doses.
Oh, I see what you say, product type.
Yes, that one.
Henrico.
Yeah. Product type, so it's.
That's probably what they call the product.
Yeah.
Maybe where it, it could be where it derives from.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Was there anything else in there, board members?
Regarding the Bio-Salads, I have had quite a few phone calls about that. They want to know what the signs are about and when it's going to start.
Bio-Salads has been going on in the county for about 15 to 20-plus years and it's regulated through the state government.
Yes, but there's a lot of signs.
That's required, they're required to put the sign out before they comply with Bio-Salads.
So I recommended that they go to that meeting with DEQ so they get everything.
That's a good recommendation.
I think it's 30 days prior to applying the Bio-Salad. The sign has got to be present where they're going to do it at.
And I did find out that if you have a medical condition, that you can contact DEQ and fill out a form and they will move the setback another 400 feet away from your property.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And the call I got, went to the meeting and said that the, the applications, he was concerned about were all withdrawn.
Okay.
So he's, he's good to go. He told me, he said, I guess if you keep after some, some good will happen.
Okay. All right, if nothing else, Mr. Bowen, your report, please, sir.
Yeah, keep it short and simple. So basically what I'm be working, you heard the report about the animal shelter. I'm going to go attend some multiple meetings too, to get that off the ground, so we can get that out on bid. some multiple meetings too, to get that off the ground, so we can get that out on bid, um, now, look, I, I gotta get a smooth transition for the commissioner of revenue, voter registration, and the treasurer, I don't refer to the BB and T. Bank anymore, I call it the RR and T., uh, revenue, registration, and treasure, but anyhow, um, I got a meeting tomorrow, uh, with the internet provider, uh, for the service, um, Mr. Philip V. is gonna help me, he, he, they need to know a little bit about the infrastructure on the outside of the building, um, I will be coming to you in January, you know, I mentioned that thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars that came back from, uh, uh, the health insurance, I will be coming to you to, uh, possibly to allocate the, the amount of rent that's due until, uh, 'cause that was not in the budget, um, until June thirtieth, um, which would be a total twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, um, uh, I'm also, I got Mr. Shane Hawkins, who is looking at some of the furniture, he's gonna try to sort some things out for me down at the LRA to see if, what, what, what we can utilize, so we don't have to buy new, new stuff, and maybe some, from my understanding, some really nice stuff, some of these old desks that some of these, uh, people are having now, um, I don't even know if they gonna come, you're gonna have to take them apart to get them moved, and I don't know if they gonna come apart or fall apart, and so, um, the first step though is get that, get that, that, that internet infrastructure set, get the bright system right, and then, and then, um, start moving furniture, so we'll be able to move, and the plan is to move the treasurer first, uh, sometime in February, hopefully the, either the first or second week in February, the se- second one will be the commissioner of revenue, and then the third one will be the voter registration out of the, uh, Berkville School, um, the, um, setting up some training, uh, and I appreciate Susan Tucker doing that, making connections, um, I'll try to get, uh, VACOR to come in to give us some HR training that's free, an insurance company, and, um, and, uh, Philip V., he says, "Steve, that's the way to go, they'll, they'll, they'll help you, because they don't want you to be in court," and so, when I set that up, I'm gonna try to include the towns that they wanna, since, you know, I think we all need a little HR training, I'll, I'll contact Blackstone, Berkville, and Crew, and, um, see if we can have a good training session, uh, somewhere, and fill up a room somewhere or another, e- even if I gotta contact, uh, Joey Shadef and see if I can do it at Crew, um, the fire department in, you know, kinda middle of the county, so, yeah, anyway, um, we're gonna talk a little bit more in closed session, some of the other things that we are, um, we are up against here in the next couple of months, and, um, so that's, that ends my report thus far, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, I appreciate everything you and the staff does for the county and the board, um, Mr. Um, Collins, before you take off in your comments, sir, I skipped your, um, the jail board, did you have anything that you wanted to speak on on that, and then you can lead it to your comment?
Just ongoing discussions about VCBR funding, and then also disposition of cases, there was some discussion about that, and I think there's a meeting next week between the superintendent and our Commonwealth attorney, um, it's two-hundred-and-ten federal inmates, so that's good, that's positive news, uh, January first, the new rate'll kick in, so they'll be making, uh, a margin above costs, so that's gonna help us.
Good deal.
That's all I have.
But, do you have anything for your comments, sir? Go ahead with that.
Well, as always, we're, you know, every week we find a, a place where there's a little leak in the budget, and let's keep finding them, but, um, let's be honest with each other, and let's be, talk, and figure out solutions to, to stop that, um, if we can stop everything that we found, we'll be in pretty good shape.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
All right, Mr. Ingram?
Uh, well, I made my report on the animal shelter, I'm very, uh, pleased about that, I think that the CARES group is really into it now, you know, and raising more and more money as they, as we go along, uh, I, you know, what Steve said, Dr. Carr's really helped us with, you know, the flow of the building and that type of thing, and, and that's gonna really help, uh, I just feel like we've done a lot, but there's so much more to do, and I wanna congratulate Ms. Norton on her certificate, uh, that's, that's real great, and, uh, hopefully we'll see some citizens on December fifth.
There you go, all right, Ms. Norton?
Um, a couple of things, um, as Mr. Rock knows, I'm not stealing your thunder, Mr. Rock and I attended the Crew Town Council meeting on Tuesday night, it was moved tonight, uh, and we were made aware of the new council meet, members being, um, sworn in, look forward to working with all of them, and we heard a very encouraging report, it was one of the best responses to the water issue that, that I've heard yet, um, and you can go out on their website and watch those comments, but it, it is just phenomenal what they're going to be able to do with the money, um, and there's a lot that people don't realize about this whole project, it's two phases, it's the delivery system and the production system, and they're gonna replace the, um, what was it, John, from nineteen-seventy, the water treatment plant, which that's gonna cost about forty million dollars, and then they've gotta replace that five-point-one miles on the main line, that's a different project, but it's very exciting, um, they've, they're saving, they're already six-hundred-and-forty-thousand of their opera money for a match, um, they're working with VDH, and, um, Phil Miskovic is the lead on this, he and, and Sean Davis, um, I gave the counties, thank you to all of them for, on our behalf, um, they have worked diligently on this, and it's gonna take three to five years to come to fruition, but it, it's something that's long overdue, long, long overdue, fifteen years ago, my husband was on the Crew Town Council, and they were fighting over water, so, but, um, John and I did attend that, and, um, John and I also have attended, they had a three-day workshop on the revitalization of the town of Crew, they're applying and have received some grants from VDH for the total renovation of the town of Crew, and tonight I went, um, before I came here, that, it was a phenomenal meeting, the company name is, um, Hill Studios by David Hill, and he brought in his entire team for three days, they work for local officials, the council, different people, business owners, and the overlays and the pictures are phenomenal, and he's supposed to send that to me, so I will send that to y'all, but it's really a bright spot, it gives Crew hope, with the water being fixed, and all of the, the ideas they have for the town, it's gonna make them very progressive, and, um, I'm hoping Berkville will fall in line too, and do the same thing, but it was a phenomenal presentation, I, I can't wait, they talked about branding, and it's just the history of the railroad, and all that kinda cool stuff, but it was very exciting to see that they wanna keep Crew growing, but a home, a place where people wanna live, so that was awesome, um, and like I said, John and I both went to that, and I went to the, um, PSR, Pivancee Resources, had their Christmas gathering tonight, it's called the Subaru Share the Love Event, um, and all of y'all, any of the public can go up there and drop off, they, they collect things for the senior citizens, they collect gloves and hats and canned food and that for Christmas, but, uh, it was a very, very nice event, very well put on, and Pete, I cannot say enough about PSR, they are really growing, Arlene Robertson is one of our citizens that's also on that board, and it was a, it was a great event, we've had a, a busy week, um, and Bill may want to say a little something too, when we went to VACO, Bill and I split up and went to separate sessions, breakout sessions, and I went to the one on finances, of course, and the state of finances for Virginia, so I gave a copy of all that to you all, but Virginia has a huge surplus this year, and the neighborhood of billions of dollars, so they suggested if the county wants something, they better ask now, get in touch with your delegates, your representatives, make that ask, so it can go through the general assembly process now, 'cause who knows what the future will bring, but right now, the state is in really good shape, but also, there's numbers in there that will affect us later on, they're gonna give races again, so we know we're gonna have to look at that, but it was very, very interesting, um, economic development, and one of my favorite workshops I went to was public safety and EMS, and, um, one of our neighboring supervisors, I'm gonna call his name, from Lunenburg, kinda handed one of the delegates his, himself on a plateau, because he pushed it back to the localities, and everybody in that room was EMS, most of them firefighters and that kinda thing, and they were up in arms, because they wanna push the responsibility to the locality, and this gentleman said it best, he said, "How can we pay for paid services when it takes all we have to pay the state mandates, we have nothing left?" So, that, that was interesting, um, I'm not real sure what all Bill went to, it was a blur those three days, it was, we learned a lot, made some good connections, found about some of your trash, Mr. Bowen, so Bill will be talking to you about that.
Like, real trash, or some idea?
No, that would be the skeleton in the closet.
I thought about the skeleton, I was like, I don't remember that.
Clean trash.
Clean trash, clean trash, I like that.
Clean trash.
Thank y'all, and, uh, I would highly recommend all of y'all, I know it's, it's labor-intensive, it's time-intensive, but to lead, we have to learn, and it's so many changing things all the time, it was a lot, but, but it was very well worth it, and to several citizens who have called me and asked about where it was located, I cannot, I mean, it was VACO's choice to host it at the homestead, and we were invited to take our spices, so I will let you know that I am reimbursing for my husband's expenses, so, I didn't have to, but I am, but, um, it was a very, very worthwhile program, and I hope to be able to bring more to the table by going.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Norton, uh, Mr. Toth?
You gonna reimburse it?
You gonna reimburse the county for your husband going?
Yes.
Did you have to rent an extra bed?
No.
I'm thinking of it.
They charged more.
I know he went, and I'm glad he did go, if I went, I'd want my wife to go with me. I wouldn't reimburse the county for that, I think the county owes that to you, Ms. Norton, but I do wanna congratulate you on your certification, and I more so, or just as want to congratulate Ms. Sue Yates for the flowers that she gave you, because...
That blew me away.
It blew a lot of us away, I think Sue has got a very loving, soft side that we don't see very often, I've seen it once before, I had in the parking lot, and I try to say that, that, uh, I can talk to Marilyn Manson and the Pope, and I've not decided, I've decided Sue is certainly not in any relations or, or reminding me of Marilyn Manson, nor the Pope, but she's a little bit different person to talk to, and she's, she's a very good lady that does care about our community, but sometimes may come across the wrong way, but by her presenting Ms. Norton with those flowers tonight, that shows to Sue Norton that, that I met in the parking lot back in, uh, maybe February, and, um, and one other thing I'd like to add, uh, in my closing statement is, the resources that Nodaway County's been blessed with is phenomenal, and it's more so phenomenal that this board is digging into these resources to save these taxpayers some money, and, and our, uh, such as radio systems and, and, uh, the animal shelter, and to try to keep us back from acquiring any new debt, and potentially paying off some debt earlier, so I'll, I'll continue to look forward to work with each and every one of y'all, and other great folks of the county to, to explore those opportunities of, uh, of revenue sources. I will share that, that, uh, myself and, and, uh, Bill and Steve, uh, done a little visit this week down to Waverly to look at the switchgrass operation, and that, that was very interesting, and, and, um, it was agriculture-related, and that's usually the most interesting, but, but I will say, I feel like that Steve's, uh, snuffed me a little bit, because I thought we was going to Barfoot and we was going to Waver, I thought he went by the road, and I said, "Hey, you missed that road," and he said, "No, we're going to Waver," he said, "Do you want me to carry you back, you need to be back?" I said, "No, put me out here, I'll get somebody to come pick me up," but it was very joyful, and, uh, and I enjoyed it, and it was, it was very learning, so I'm glad that no one told me it was in Waverly, 'cause I would not have went, and I'm glad I did, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Toth.
I think Andrew Kelly was supposed to let him know that, but I'm not sure.
Uh, you need to click, uh, look, Steve, don't forget, don't pass it off on your staff there, we do have your evaluation coming up.
HR training, I gotta go, HR training.
But, uh, yes, absolutely, Ms. Norton, congratulations, and, uh, enjoyed these, uh, meetings that we've had, uh, recently, um, uh, looking into some of this thing for the districts that we, uh, the town of Crew that we split there, it's, it's wonderful, and it's wonderful to see what they've got going on there, and I think you've covered that, that well, um, and, you know, to the citizens, I, I greatly appreciate, and I guess I can say, I'm thankful for it, since we're headed towards Thanksgiving, I'm very thankful that, um, even with the, uh, the task that we have ahead of us, we greatly appreciate the patience that the vast majority of you have, um, uh, taken, you know, and it's allowing us to grow as a board, um, that, I, I think this board, it, what I, what I really like is that there's no clique, there's no circus, there's no chaos, it's wonderful, it's wonderful, and all of that comes when, when, when one's going this direction, or two's going this direction, and no one's talking, like you said, let's keep talking, let's keep, let's keep poking away at this thing, before y'all know it, think about it, you're almost at the end of your first year, before you know it, two years, you got one more year left, well, you gonna be campaigning, think about it, if you just, if you, if...
Or not.
Right, or if anybody decides to run again, you know, but that, but that's just it, but what I'm saying is, is this goes by fast, and that's the reason why I tell people, there, there's, sometimes, you must fix something quick, but at the majority of the time, government moves at the speed of molasses, and that molasses is cold, um, and with that, I, I would like to just say, I, I know we're coming, going in a closed session...
The molasses on the solar panel, what happened?
Uh, it'll stick to it, and it'll block it, but, um...
Till the sun comes out and run it on off.
It only, well, yeah, yeah, it might be a little femy, might, uh, might, uh, uh, make it struggle to work to its capacity, but nonetheless, to all the citizens, I'd like to wish you all a happy and safe Thanksgiving, to all the hunters out there, go get your big one, go get your child their, uh, first one, or their best one, be safe, and, uh, to staff, God bless you, each and every one of you, for everything that y'all have done and will do and are doing, and happy Thanksgiving, and to the board members, I, I, I can't say enough, thank y'all, I'm very thankful for each and every one of y'all, uh, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to go in a closed session, it's, it is on your, uh, agenda sheet, if someone would read it aloud, please. Don't you all jump at one time?
I'll read it. I move that the board of supervisors of Nodaway County, Virginia, adjourned to closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia two-dash, two-point-two-dash-three-seven-eleven-A-eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically relating to matters now pending in county administration, and A. 3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically property located near Fort, Fort Barfoot.
All right, we have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and just for discussion, Mr. Bowen, just to clarify to the public, who are we inviting with the board into closed session?
We're inviting Mr. Greg Zody, a planner, and, uh, representatives from AA.
And our attorney as well.
And our attorney as well.
We're not gonna forget you, Gary, you're sitting here...
He's got to be there.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going in a closed session. Any opposed? We're going into closed session.
Be sure you leave your mics off and in here.
To open session now and we need to certify, well I need a motion to come back into open session, I'm sorry.
Make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now back in open session and we need a motion to certify who wants to read that.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in that closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the Board of Supervisors and no action was taken in the closed meeting regarding the items discussed.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Mr. Collins and board members, we're going to do a roll call vote and Mr. Collins after everybody has voted if you would be kindly enough sir to ask me for my certification, do you so certify Mr. Collins?
I do.
Ms. Ingram?
I do.
Ms. Norton?
I do.
Mr. Tuck?
I do.
Mr. Rourke?
I do. You have five certifications and let me, if you don't mind, Mr. Collins.
I'll certify and write that down, got you, thank you.
All right, there's no action to be taken from the closed session at this time, just want the public to remember that there will be a public hearing December 5th at 7:00 PM right here. There will be two items on that, on that public hearing on December 5th and we will get all the information out about what those two items are in that advertisement.
Yeah, I'll get Ms. Kelly on that, she said she'll get on that first thing tomorrow.
Okay, all right, everybody again have a happy Thanksgiving, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by standing up.